Good evening and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. Tonight, we have three candidates for Houston City Council at-large, position three. We're going to ask them some questions to learn a little bit more about them and their positions on the issues affecting Houston at-large, the city at-large. I'd like to thank you all and welcome you to Conversations with the Candidates, the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. And we're going to jump right into the questions. And so, we're going to start over here on my left-hand side with Marshall McLintock. You're going to have about three minutes. Tell us about yourself and why you decided to run for at-large position three.
Yeah, so I'm Marcel McLintock. Thank you again for hosting this and having all of us here. I am the 18-year-old running for Houston City Council at-large three. And I think that, you know, the biggest component and the biggest reason for my candidacy is, comes out of my service on the Mayor's Gun Task Force. I survived a shooting in 2016 outside of my church in West Houston. A guy had an AR-15 and ran on a rampage for an hour while I taught Sunday School class to a class of toddlers. We had to shelter in place, lockdown, and deal with, you know, these children hearing the gunshots outside. It was a war zone. It was scary. Coming out of that, two years later, I co-organized the Houston March for Our Lives, where we had 15,000 Houstonians turn out with us downtown to march for sensible gun laws. And we asked Mayor Turner to do more on the issue of gun violence in the city, you know, seeing as though our city should be proactive in the fight to combat gun violence and not just remain silent and allow these vicious acts to plague our city. You know, and I dove into more research in my time, you know, traveling across the country, lobbying other states for laws and building bridges with Republicans and Democrats alike on these issues and trying to network and build relationships that I could sustain through my life and hopefully career. And I found that I became passionate about ending sex trafficking also, flood mitigation, and affordable housing, and fighting gentrification. All of these issues are super important to Houstonians. And I thought that the current leadership in this specific seat is not, you know, doing his job. And I think that he's doing a disservice to Houstonians. So I hope to, with my candidacy, and I hope to, with my candidacy, bring out something in Houston that I think we haven't seen in this seat for a long time. And that is a fighter, an advocate for people, and someone who truly values the diversity of our great city and wants to push it in the right direction for the future. You know, like I said before, I'm 18-years-old. I just turned 18 in July. And I have had the pleasure of meeting people all across our great, big city and driving around it for hours and hours a day, meeting people here. And our people are beautiful. We have, we have, we have a city that is so loving, resilient. Coming out of Harvey, we saw that. And I think that what we need in this, in our city council is someone who is willing to advocate for people and what is best for the future of our city. These issues are going to affect my generation the most: climate change, gun violence, flood mitigation, and traffic congestion. These issues are not going to get better by keeping in the same cycle of folks who've caused the problems and then also refuse to enact the change that needed to fix them. And so, that's why I'm running for Houston City Council at-large three, because I just can't wait any longer for these, for these problems to be solved. I have to do it, we have to do it ourselves.
Thank you very much. Michael Kubasch.
Thank you very much for hosting this event. Before I ever became a council member, I took on issues in the city of Houston as a citizen, collecting over 50,000 petitions to rid the city of the red light cameras that the citizens were being, taken advantage of. Even Mayor Parker later called it a money-grab scheme. And so, I pushed really hard for that. The citizens voted them out of the city. And as you well know, we also have an ordinance that was passed in the city to criminalize the feeding of the needy, the poor. And I fought that too, before I was ever a council member. And we collected 33,000 petitions to get it, to get it back on the ballot for people to not criminalize people who want to give food to those that are hungry and needy. And so, I was able to champion that as well. I'm a father of five children. I'm a grandfather of 19 grandkids. And I also have a great-grandson. And I'm way too young to be a great-grandpa, I can tell you that. But I have a large family. And we've been here in Houston pretty much all of our lives. We have, we have done everything we can to support the community at-large. And I enjoy being a council member, because when people call me about a problem, my staff and I, well, we just show up at their house after we tell them we're going to come and we'll show up. It's a difference when you have a council member that's active. Even though I'm at-large, I cover the whole city, I go out to their homes. They can have my cellphone. They can text me. They can call me. Rarely a day passes where I don't get 10 to 15 text messages or calls that maybe my trash hadn't been picked up, maybe, maybe my water has, I can't seem to pay my water bill. And so, we do whatever we can to work with the nonprofits, to help them, and with the city, to help people, especially the seniors who are hurting out there. And during the Harvey, when we received $125 million, the city and the county did, the money was given to the Greater Houston Community Foundation. And I went to them within two weeks after the hurricane. We had 48 hours was following me for three days, all the homes I was going into. And they were saying, "Well, where's the money?" So I went to the Greater Houston Community Foundation to find out where the money was. And they said, "Well, council member, we, we have to raise $1.3 million to give this money out." I said, "Well, when is it going to be?" "Well, we're going to, we're going to give it out. We have to make sure the right people get it." "Well, let me tell you, I told them the wrong people have it now." Because the people needed the money now to buy diapers and food and clothing. And they, they were hurting. And that money, it took nine and a half months for that money to ever be given out. It was given out to over 126 nonprofits. And I've yet to meet anybody that received any cash from that. People did receive services. And I'm still concerned about it, because there's still people that are displaced because of Hurricane Harvey.
Okay, thank you very much. Janaya Carmouch.
Yes. I, as you've mentioned, my name is Janaya Carmouch. And I was brought to this moment through my many years of service. I was raised to serve. I share with people often, my maternal grandmother would cook for the neighborhood with the limited resources we had. And our job every Sunday after Mass would be to deliver plates to whatever family needed them and run errands for seniors. And through that service, we developed a sense of compassion and responsibility for our neighbors. Around age 12, I began to understand better the role that government has in developing the lives of the people that it's entrusted to serve. And so, early on, my mother fostered that interest by taking me to town halls, engaging me in campaigns. And so, this is embedded in who I am. And understanding the great power and responsibility that those who are representative of those communities have in making sure that there's a better quality of life. I've worked at city council, both district and at-large offices. I've worked at state senate, and most recently in Precinct One in Harris County, where I was the deputy director of community engagement. And it was a remarkable experience where I realized the power that I had often shunned. And that is to change things at their root cause. I was in the middle of a community meeting, helping those residents address an issue. And I decided then that those, the sum total of my experience should be given, and I should give myself in service to those residents to issue, excuse me, to address the issues that had plagued their communities for so long. And so, that was a turning point for me. Like others here, I worked on Harvey, where I was able to provide $50,000 in direct funding to families in need. But more than that, in the year that we served, I worked on public policy and advancing that understanding to the community on the inequitable dispensation of the $2.5 billion flood bond through the, through Harris County, which is where Houston is largely a part of. Some of the things that I want to bring to this conversation, I want to empower every community. I want to make sure that every community member works alongside and is able to hold accountable those who represent them. And so, we're going to be able to do that together through a number of platform and policy opportunities, because policy is the best way to change the trajectory of every community and of every individual and stakeholder in this city. And so, I look forward to being able to share a bit more of that in our conversation to follow.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you all for answering that question. You all have very poignant stories, and I appreciate you sharing them with us and the viewers. The next question I want to ask you, and again, you're going to have about three minutes. Both of you talked about the issue of flooding. And here in Houston, we've seen this over and over again. It seems like increasingly more, every, every year, we have to deal with flooding and those issues. So, as an at-large council member, you're representing the whole city. What do you think, the steps that you would take to address flooding would be if you get on city council?
So, I think we have to be innovative about our approach to flooding. And we have to have a multi-pronged system. So, in addition to widening our bayous and extending, clearing out some of our waterways, we have to look at what can we use as dual-purpose spaces. The city of Cutter donated eight soccer fields near University of Houston downtown. And not only is it going to serve as a place of recreation and community for the residents in that area, but it's going to double as a detention pond. And so, we're going to look at, well, we need to look at, how do we connect our tributaries in a way that they flow better? Are we adding additional green space to those areas where it mitigates the water? Are we taking a look and informing residents who may be transient, they may live in apartment complexes based on their needs? Are we informing them that they're in a floodplain? Our floodplain conditions are very different than what they used to be. So, in order for us to build a better Houston in a way that is supportive of our city's residents, because we're going to have these rain events, whether it's like the Mother's Day surprise flood, or as catastrophic as Harvey, we need to identify ways that we can be comprehensive in our response. So again, it's green space, it's innovative detention spaces, it's the basics, like expanding our, our bayous and clearing our waterways. And identifying whether or not we're making the best use of our spaces and opportunity to mitigate those rains in the, in the community. And also talking to and working with the developers to ensure that whenever they're creating these communities, that they have substantive drainage systems. And that's a part of them doing business with the city of Houston. Making sure that those areas are cleared, that people aren't buying homes and establishing their families in places that they may soon have to flee after a rain event. And so, we just need to take a more comprehensive approach, work with those developers, work with H.GAC, work with the city of Houston and the county, and a more cooperative and innovative way to address those issues.
Janaya Carmouch, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Kubasch.
Flooding knows no boundaries of city or county. And as a result of that, we need a overall comprehensive flood mitigation plan. There isn't one that I know of at this time. I know the county has, has now, we passed a bond election to mitigate flooding. But the governor of the state of Texas sat within three feet of me after Hurricane Harvey. And he said to me, when I asked him about that third reservoir that hasn't never been built, and he said, "I'm going to use the rainy day fund to build that $500 million reservoir. And it'll, it'll take the water away from some of these watersheds that are pouring into Houston." I've talked to all three of the county, the county judges of Harris County, Fort Bend County, Waller County, and nothing has been done. Nothing has taken place. The governor has not pushed this. We have billions of dollars in the rainy day fund, and we had a rainy day. And if there's ever been a time when there needs to be an overall comprehensive plan for the entire region, that's going to have to bring in Waller County, it's going to have to bring in Fort Bend County, and possibly even Brazoria County. But we have a Houston-Galveston area council that is established. They should be able to work this out. We've got to get the Corps of Engineers involved. We have to get FEMA involved. We have to get updated flood maps. We have to look at where these watersheds are pouring out into. And, and they've already established all these watersheds. But we have to do better in overall developing and strategic flood plan for Harris County. It's not enough for the city to just have one, because we can't be dumping our water on Brazoria County or Fort Bend County. We have to have an overall comprehensive plan. And I've been pushing for that. I'm, I'm still waiting to see the governor take the lead on it and to build that third reservoir to protect the west side of Houston. And it'll also protect all those folks along those watersheds that pour in to White Oak Bio. So, let's get moving on these overall comprehensive plans. It's not enough just to clean out a ditch. We've got to figure out where the water's flowing, and we got to, we have to mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kubasch. Marcel McLintock.
Yeah, so, so I agree with, with Janaya that, you know, a big piece of this is going to be widening our bayous, you know, like I agree with council member Kubasch, that we need to also add this, this, you know, I just lost all my, all my words. But we need to, we need to add a retention center, exactly. And so, but, but a big piece of this also is, we can expect to, to see less floods and, and, you know, less rain in our city if we're not combating climate change in our city. This is, this is key and huge for us in our city. We are the energy capital of the world. We're really the fossil fuel, fuel energy capital of the world. And so, I would love to see our city turn to become, you know, a leading city on, on the green energy scope. And I think that's going to be a key to us seeing less and less of these major storms and floods. You know, I live on the west side of town. Addicks Dam is behind my house. It's my backyard. All of my friends, I went to Stratford High School, a lot of them were flooded out of their homes. I had to gut their homes with them. And we live along the bayou. And this was, this was a horrible experience for everyone in our community. It's traumatizing. Every time it rains now, I don't know if I can get home. And that's a lot of folks in our city. You just don't know anymore if you can make it to your house. It used to not be like this. So, so a big component of this is going to be cleaning out our ditches and drainage systems to ensure that water is flowing correctly. There's, there's a drainage system outside of, outside of where I live down the street. And it's always backed up with hay, because the guy down the road has horses and stables, and it's never cleaned out. And so, it's backing up the ditch. Water is going to continue to rise if we don't clean these things out. And so, it is important for us to do this. We also need to be pressuring the state and county to do more on the issue also. So, so part of that is going to come in to help us build these things to, to offset where we're seeing water rise. But it's also going to be a comprehensive plan, like, like we've heard down the line, and, and complete overhaul of our flood mitigation plans. And it has to come from all levels of government. It can't just be the city of Houston alone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. McLintock, we're going to start back with you again for this next question. Houston's a big city. You live on the west side of town. And representing an at-large district, you really have to think about the city as a whole. How big of a role are transportation issues in Houston? And what would you do if you were elected to city council and an at-large position to address some of those issues?
Yeah, so, so like you said, I live on the west side of town, where we're getting, you know, I guess reasonable access to metro or Metro Rail is, you know, it just doesn't exist out there. And it's only in downtown Houston. But, but to think that, that we have not expanded our, our transportation system to connect to our major airports yet is, is a shame. And so, I mean, key of this, or point one of this is going to be expanding Metro Rail to connect to our major airports. I also want to see what other candidates have been talking about in other races is, you know, we need to see Metro connect to the outskirts of our city and the suburbs and Katy, Texas. And we have people coming in from all parts of the Houston, Greater Houston area. So, we're talking about Cypress also. Folks are traveling into our city to work. We have a lot of folks who live in this area, but we're not, we're not accommodating them. That's why we see, you know, traffic congestion. Too many people are on the roads. And then, we've, we've thought for, for a long time that wider roads equals less traffic. And that's just the complete opposite of the laws of decongesting traffic. It doesn't work that way. It never has, and it's not going to. We should be mimicking other cities in northern areas of the country and across the globe and in Europe and China, where we see, you know, where we're using rail and we're relying on rail. It's energy efficient. It gets you to, to your destination faster. It's cheaper. You're not having to sit in traffic in your car. And, and it's just, it's a more reliable system to, to travel. And so, we should be fighting that, investing in that in our city. There, there's business opportunities there. And we're also going to see, I think, better quality of life for folks who are being able to get to their places faster from point A to point B in a more energy-efficient manner. And also, you know, our roads are terrible. People are driving on our roads every single day, and they're getting worse and worse and worse. And we see so much inaction and inadequate action and just, I think a lot of the concepts that we've seen from our city hall just don't make sense when we come into repairing our roads. The roads out in West Houston are bad. The roads out in East Houston are bad. In South Houston, North Houston, Central Houston, everywhere, there is a problem on our streets. And we haven't been attacking it hard enough. And so, part of this, you know, one key aspect is the expensive overhaul and fixing our roads and paving them over, but also redesigning how we structure our roads to accommodate for the million people that are going to come to our city in the next five to six years. We're on track to go and become the third-largest city in America, and we can't accommodate the residents we have here now. And so, I think that we need to be bracing for this impact of all these residents moving to our, to our city. And a piece of that is going to be public transport. We can look at tolls like other cities have done, major cities in America, tolls on the highways to, to, you know, pressure you to use public transport in the short term. So, those are things, a few things that I would support in the transportation aspects.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McLintock. Mr. Kubasch, transportation issues.
Every day in the city of Houston, Monday through Friday, the population of the city of Atlanta comes into Houston from outside the city and to work inside of our city. Think about that. Our roads have to not only take care of the city of Houston, but also the population of Atlanta coming into the city, congesting our roads. The mayor said the first few months he was in office that there has to be a paradigm switch. And I've been waiting to see, when are we going to have these meetings in the community to talk about this paradigm switch? It's almost impossible to get a man out of his car and to put him in a bus. Now, when you begin to look at the northern cities, the most congested city in America, the city where you spend most of your time in a car, according to the U.S. News and World Report that came out in August of 2019, is the city of Boston. And Boston has the most congested city. And they have rail. And then, you've got New York, the next city is Washington, D.C., and they have rail. And the next city on the top 10 is, is Chicago. The city of Houston's not even in the top 10. You're going to spend 165 hours a year in your car in traffic if you live in Boston, whereas in Houston, it's still down just to 75 hours a year, according to this report. I'm just saying, we've got to do better. We've got to make some changes. You know, there, there's got to be some answers to these problems. But with people moving in like they have been, it just, it's just going to cause more and more congestion. We have to make the bus lines more available to people who, who want to use them. And we have now multiple transportation systems, even like Uber and Lyft and other TNCs that have come in, that, that have really helped people in a lot of ways. But, but we still have to do better. There's, there's got to be meetings in the community. The administration needs to call transportation, not just a hearing in the middle of the day for council members to attend and three or four people to be in the audience. That's not sufficient. We're going to have to have meetings at night. There's got to be nighttime meetings at city council. When you have people come downtown to speak to city council, and they have to pay to park, and they, they have to be there at, at 9:30 in the, it's actually at 1:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, in, in that congested time, we're not really hearing from the people. We need to have city council meetings in the communities. We need to have certain places, there's 11 districts, we need to have one in each district every, every, every year. There ought to be one in each district, so that the people can come and participate in their government. It's not enough just to say, "Well, you should have sent something to city hall." You've got to open the door for them to be able to come in and to see them. And I'm, I'm tired of having people tell me they're tired of paying to have to come into city hall. We should give them a free pass if they're coming to city hall.
Thank you very much. And finally, Janaya Carmouch, what about transportation issues facing the city? What would you do if elected to at-large position?
So, as stated before, we are not in position to handle our own success. We're growing and becoming more denser as a city. And that's because we've developed a reputation for a better quality of life, a more progressive space. And so, it is, it should be in line with who we are in creating multimodal transportation options. I think that Metro is moving in the right direction. I think organizations like Link are doing an incredible job by making sure that we are aware of issues like Vision Zero and the 12 deadliest intersections here in the city of Houston. We have to be mindful of the comprehensiveness of our city. We're just not a car city anymore. We're not a car state anymore, though that is one of our primary sources of financial growth. And so, what does that look like in balancing those things? Creating spaces for our pedestrians, our cyclists, our individuals who are mobility-challenged, who are moving in wheelchairs or by canes? How are we protecting those individuals? Looking at getting people out of cars and into these transportation options. Making sure that people understand that this should be our first decision and not our second. Then, we're taking a look at how, as Marcel stated earlier, the configuration of those streets and roads, and how we're adapting to the redesigns of some of our cities in a more thoughtful way. Are we making sure that some of the, and Metro's doing a great job of that, they're looking at these smaller vehicles navigating on more historic areas, so that we're not intruding upon their, their quality of life in order to expedite transportation options. And then, let's move a little further up and talk about the Tech Dot project and its impact on communities. So, we have to be more mindful of community impact when designing, redesigning our major roadways and making sure our federally funded major projects are, and the council members are mandating, excuse me, that those federally funded projects have a community engagement component throughout the life of that project. So that as those communities develop, as those needs shift, as the understanding of our impact on the environment shifts, how are we amending that to adjust to those cities and those, those communities that will be impacted by its design? And so, as council member, there's a great deal of accessibility and partnership that is available. Transportation is not under the boundaries of what a city council member does, but access. Access is so important. Having the person at the table, able to have those conversations, making those requests and demands on behalf of those individuals that they serve, ensuring that we're being the best stewards of our communities and the dollars that they've provided to us to deliver those services.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carmouch. So, those are all very thoughtful questions, thoughtful responses to that question. I want to ask you, how are you going to deal with Houston's diversity? We're a diverse city, one of the most diverse cities in the region, right? And as a at-large city council member, you have to deal with all of these constituents. How are you going to work with that diverse population in the city of Houston? How are you going to represent the various constituencies across the city? Ms. Carmouch, we'll start with you.
Well, I am a proud bonus mom of five. And I think of my kids. I think of our two youngest boys, who are incredible young men, who are charitable and kind, but visually, they may be seen as a threat. I think of our twins, who are members of the LGBTQIA community, who should not be discriminated against simply because of the people that they love. And I think of our older son, who is a new father, and understanding that we need to create an environment that is supportive of young parents and parents in general, who want to create a quality-of-life balance for themselves in pursuit of higher goals. And so, making Houston diverse means considering all those things. It means creating a welcoming space that is respectful of individuals, respectful of their space and their ambition. You know, we had the opportunity to establish policy that would codify that sentiment. And we lost that opportunity. So, I hope that we have the opportunity again to create a space where people know, moving into Houston, you can be a parent and a hard-working member of our community. You can be non-gender conforming and not be discriminated against. You can be a young man with an Arabic name, and no one consider you as a threat. I think that we have to take steps to change the culture here, to make sure that people understand that we're in this conversation, we're, this is a part of who we are for the law. understand that we're in this conversation, this is a part of who we are for the long haul. And I think policy goes a long way in establishing that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kubash?
Of the three candidates here, I'm the only one that has a record already. My record's real clear. The last election, four years ago, 11 districts, I won all 11 districts. I won overwhelmingly, the entire city, by over 60% of the vote. There was no district that I didn't win by more than 50% of the vote. I go out to all the community. I try to listen to everybody's problems. It doesn't mean I have to solve their problem, but I have to listen to try to understand what the problems are. So long as I have a voice, a vote, and a seat at the table, then the people are going to have a voice, a vote, and a seat at the table. When I ran for office, I ran as an outsider, and I asked the people to put me on the inside, and I'd tell you what's really going on at City Hall. And I've kept my word. And when people have a problem, I speak up for them. And I will continue to do so. I appreciate the vote of the people, the vote of confidence they gave me last time. Of all the citywide elected officials, the mayor, the comptroller, all the council members that were citywide, I was the only one that wasn't in a runoff. And I want to thank you for that. This gives me a chance to do that. And that tells you that the public knows that I care, and I'm out there supporting you. I've been a foster parent. I've run two foster group homes. I've had 47 foster children in my homes. I've had six foster children in my own home. And I've even adopted a child. And when you do those kinds of things, and you have compassion for everyone, it doesn't matter what their background is, you care. And so that's the image that the people have of me. That's what I've done, and that's what I'll continue to do. And I look for your vote on November the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Kubash. Mr. McClintock?
Yeah, you know, I just want to start off by saying that I think everything we just heard is completely false. You know, what I hear in the city when I talk to voters, and they hear who I'm running against, they say, oh, that's the guy who hates the LGBTQ community. That's the one, that's the guy who doesn't want to advocate for the LGBTQ community in our city. That's the guy who championed the repeal of the hero ordinance. So a big piece of our city, dealing with the diversity and richness of our city, that is the most diverse city in America, we have to speak up for not just ourselves, council member, but also for groups that have been oppressed and not listened to for so, so, so long. And a big, a major group of people here in the city of Houston is the growing LGBTQ community. And so, you know, we're not fighting for them at City Hall right now. We're not, we don't have an equal rights ordinance to protect them right now. We should, I support a hero 2.0, where we include the trans community in this ordinance, where we're advocating for pregnant men and trans men and women in our city. We're advocating for the elderly in our city, young people securing jobs, women and people of color in our city. We are, again, the most diverse city in America, and the fact that we don't have an equal rights ordinance to defend that is disgusting. It's disgusting. It really is. I am a young black man in America. I understand the troubles every day of that title, of that label, and, you know, in the city and just society as a whole. And it's my belief that we should be advocating for young black men in this country just as hard as we're advocating for young white men in this country. We're not doing that right now. And so we need a leadership to represent and reflect that of our city. Our city is diverse. It is brown, it is black, it is gay, it is lesbian, it is trans, it is Middle Eastern, it is Asian American, it is European. We are so rich in diversity, our council does not reflect that right now. I'm running for city council to bring that to the table. We're not giving folks a voice on city council by just hearing their problems, refusing to fix those problems. I think when we're really advocating for these people, we're listening to them, we're taking their feelings into account, and we are fighting for them. We are trying to fix our problems, taking it up to the right people in the county level, at the state level, at the congressional level. I have built those relationships already. I have them in the state legislature, the county, the Senate, the U.S. Senate, the U.S. Congress, and I have a friend running for President of the United States. And so I've built these bridges to try to bring collectively everyone to the table to fight for everyone in America who is, who doesn't always look like, you know, Council Member Kubash. And so I think that it's important for us to recognize that. The voters in the city don't understand, not all of them understand, Mr. Kubash's stance is on the LGBTQ community in our city. But I think that now, now everyone does, and now we do. And I hope to push that a little bit more, and so that we are fighting for everyone in our city who has been oppressed and shut down for far too long.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your responses to those questions. I'm going to turn to a little different avenue now. One of the responses earlier that you gave me, we were talking about quality of life in Houston. And here in Houston, we want two things, right? We want economic development, we want more business opportunities, and we want greater economic prosperity for everyone. But we also want a good quality of life. Are those two things compatible? Can we have both? And if elected to city council, the at-large position three, how would you balance economic development and quality of life? Mr. McClintock, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so I think that how we're doing things now is, I mean, a portion of this is okay, and we're running the city in an okay manner if we want to be lackluster and kind of behind, and off track. But another component is Houstonians know that we need more green spaces, we need more parks and accessible parks, recreation spaces all across our city. There is no, there's not a single grocery store in District D. They have to all travel out of district. We've only brought one grocery store into the district in these last four years, and it's being built right now. It's not even up for people to shop in. That doesn't help anyone's quality of life. There's not equal access to affordable food in our city. And so, again, we are the fourth largest city in America, the most diverse. We don't have equal access to food in the city. We don't have equal access to workers' protections in our city or to landlord and renters' protections in our city. There's so much going wrong. Balancing quality of life and the economy is not, I think, a question of if we can do it, but it's just whether or not we choose to do it or not. You know, the city is, our city is rich. Our city is on track to earn more money the farther we go on. I see investment opportunities in cleaner energy. The Council Member Kubash just said that he doesn't think we should be copying these other cities who are on the forefront of change. I think we should be. I think that we also have investment opportunities in rail, which is working in cities across the country and across the world. We're behind, again. So our city, we're on track to grow to be the third largest in America, and we are constantly behind. Again, the question's not if we can, I think it's just whether or not we choose to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Kubash?
Well, you know, when the mayor ran, he talked about the fact that he doesn't want it to be a city of two different groups of people, the haves and the have-nots. He said that because he recognized it to be that way. In the shadows of those billion-dollar buildings and corporations downtown, you have the homeless tents, you have the beggars, you have people that are hurting. And here we are in one of the most prosperous cities in the world, and we have people that are hungry and that need help. That's one of the reasons why I was so much opposed to criminalizing the giving of food to the poor and the needy. If you give food to over five people in Houston, you can be charged with a crime. And I don't know how you can say, we want God to bless Houston, whenever you're criminalizing the very thing that every major faith believes in, and that's feeding the needy and giving to the poor. We've got to do better. There's got to be some changes made. In the shadows of those gigantic buildings downtown, tonight, there will be the homeless and the needy. Drive down Main Street tonight, and you'll see them lined up and sleeping on the streets. It is something that should bring all of us to our knees and pray. The mayor passed, got us to pass two different ordinances that deal with the homeless. He wants to help the homeless. If you attack the way things are going in the city right now, you're really not attacking the council, you're attacking the mayor, because the mayor pro-offers the entire agenda. He controls the agenda that comes to council. We can vote on nothing that he doesn't bring forward. But he brought forth two different ordinances, and we passed them both. And then lawyers sued us for the ordinances and got the ordinances stayed in federal court. He is trying to make sure that all of the veterans who need help, won't help, get help. And he's been very successful at that. The mayor has done an excellent job on pro-offering ordinances that we have voted to support but have been blocked in court. He's a compassionate person who was raised in meager means, in acres homes, and he understands the plight of the poor. And I want to do everything we can, when we talk about quality of life, we're not talking about putting more dollars in pockets of people that already have dollars, we're talking about helping those that have nothing. Because in the end, I'll be judged not by how long I sat on council, how much money I made, but rather how I treated that beggar at the end of the gate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kubash. And now, Ms. Carmouch?
So again, in the same way, so many of our issues are here in Houston, it's, there are a number of layers that we need to address. So to address immediately what you asked, is quality of life and economic development compatible? And is it possible here in the city of Houston? And absolutely. These two things are absolutely the way that we move forward as a growing city. But what we must do as we develop is be culturally competent and responsible as we move into our historic communities, often vulnerable communities of color. And so that, no one wants different things. You're not going to go into a low-income community, I live in Fifth Ward, you're not going to go into our neighborhood and offer a grocery store and have us say no. We're going to accept that. But I'm going to accept that understanding the rooftops have to follow. I'm accepting that understanding that we need to be a multi-income community, and the way communities have been before, when you had mechanics living next door, to doctors and teachers, and everyone had the same level of respect for one another because it was a community of individuals with the same shared experience and desires for a quality of life. And so, no, we don't have zoning, but I believe that we can be more strategic in our development, and we can be more comprehensive in our development, working, having worked in the city and the county levels, understanding that there's so much that we can do together as a part of this strategic development, understanding, as I continue to talk to individuals in the private sector, what they're willing to partner in doing, we can create those opportunities and not wholly displace communities. And we need to be accountable for how we handle the growth within the city. Secondarily, was mentioned the homeless population here in Houston. I served on the board of the Bread of Life under Pastor Rudy Rasmus at St. John's Downtown, and they do a remarkable job of supporting those individuals who are in crisis. Our jail system is the largest mental health institution here in the city. There's not enough funding supporting our Veterans Court, our Star Court, our drug courts, making sure that individuals who have either been trafficked or addicted or have experienced some unmet trauma or untreated trauma get the services they so desperately need prior to engaging in our criminal justice system. And so I think it's going to take a great deal of effort and focus on creating a system of response that is more comprehensive. And I think a great model for that is in San Antonio, where they've created a community of services, supporting the homeless, even taking into consideration those who no longer feel comfortable living indoors, but in creating a safe space for them as well, and providing them the services and being able to triage their needs immediately and get them back on a pathway of success within their city. And so I think that's something that we can model here in the city of Houston. There's a multi-pronged approach available to us in terms of economic development and being thoughtful in terms of that same development to the communities that we are growing within.
Thank you very much. And Janaeya, we're going to come back to you in a short amount of time, in about two minutes. Look, there's 16 members on city council. Each represents districts, others who represent at-large positions like position three is. So how are you going to work with those other people with all sorts of different interests and ideas? How can you work with them? In two minutes, how would you answer that?
I think all of us want to serve on city council to improve the lives of the people we care about, and I think that's where we start. If elected, I will have liaisons within the office to work with specific districts to help advance their priorities, to provide that support necessary that at-large council members are able to provide for those district council members. You know, being in District B and I, we worked endlessly, endlessly, because there are about four people, to serve over 200,000 individuals each. And so whatever help we could have gotten, we would have received, especially if someone would have committed their time and resources. And so that's what I expect to do, anticipate doing, is partnering with those districts to help advance the priorities of their constituency in the best way possible. Because, again, those individuals don't just have one council member, they have six.
Thank you very much. Michael?
I have worked with all of the district council members, and in fact, when matters come up in a specific district, you know, we talk to the district council member, and many times, we already know in advance, before there's a vote on a matter, how the district council member feels on this matter. And we're, we almost always defer to what the district council member wants to do because they know their district better than anybody does. There's 11 districts. Sometimes it's difficult to get to all 11 of them even in a week. We drive through some because of where I live. I've driven through H and C, and mostly, I'm in H and C, but the truth of the matter is, we defer to the district council member. When they need help, they call on us. They'll say, hey, council member, can you help me with this? Can you help me with that? Well, of course. I'm always open to do that, always willing to help. I have a history of that, a record of that, and I'll support my district council members.
Thank you very much. Marcel?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I have been building relationships and maintaining these relationships that I've networked with over the course of my high school education. When I was leaving school, you know, not all the time, but I was gone, you know, meeting legislatures, meeting city officials, talking to leaders in our county, in our state government, and in our country. And so I would do the same thing that I've done with them. And you have a conversation, you sit down, and there's always common ground. No one is for, you know, seeing more homeless folks in our city. No one is for seeing food deserts across our city. No one is for homes being flooded out. And so we find that common ground, we agree on the points, we want to end these other issues, and we find where we can work together on these things. And so I'm doing that currently, you know, to go back to just a specific number, I helped pass over 62 gun bills in over 20 states last year because of those efforts with building coalitions, working with other activists and other leaders in these respective communities to further that agenda. And so I would do the same thing when it comes to ending homelessness in our city, bringing more affordable housing into our city, you know, combating sex trafficking and gun violence in our city, and decongesting traffic, and fixing our roads, and everything else that we, the issues that are so deep into our hearts. You know, I, I'm not on city council right now, and I just came out of high school, I never really studied city council in high school. It wasn't in our textbooks. But I do know that you can have, I believe, three or four council members can also put an item on the agenda, and it's not just the mayor. And so I think that knowing that, I know that fact, I would know, you know, at least enough council members to set something on the agenda and then push these things forward. And also work with district council members because they do, like Mr. Kubash said, they do know their districts the best. We look at the city from just the bigger picture, but they know what's going on in their districts better than we do.
Thank you very much. Michael?
Well, we haven't said anything about it since we've been here today, but at 10:23 last night, I got a text from the Houston Police Department that one of our officers that had been serving our city for five years had been shot multiple times only two miles from the campus where the debate was taking place last night for president. And the officer pulled up by accident on a scene where, he just drove up on a scene where somebody was being robbed. The person that was being robbed was a priest. And fortunately enough, the priest wasn't shot, but one of the perpetrators was shot and killed, and the other two have been apprehended. But our officer is in serious condition at the hospital today. We have to stand as a city together. We have to realize that a lot of this violence that takes place has got to be stopped, and we have to do everything we can as a city to make sure we support our police. We need at least 1,600 more police officers patrolling our streets. The presence of the police reduces crime. When Mayor Lanier ran years ago, he talked about beefing up our police department. We had more police back then than we do today, and our city's much larger. We must address the issue that we must have more police officers in our city protecting our people.
So let me apologize, I threw it to you without asking the question. So let me make, so we have one minute left each. That was my mistake, I'm very sorry about that. I just got wrapped up in those answers. So Marcel, would you wrap up and tell us in one minute, why people, why are you the best candidate for at-large position three, and how can people find out more about your campaign?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks again for putting this on, and, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with the officer. and his family, of course, and as well. I am a fighter. I'm an advocate. I am passionate about the issues facing our city and facing our country as a whole. And I think that our city can lead the nation in tackling all of these issues. Sex trafficking is an issue not just here, but everywhere. But we lead the nation in sex trafficking. Same, I don't want to see our city lead the nation in gun deaths either. I don't want to see our city lead the nation in homes flooded a year. And so these issues, I think that we can really lead on. I'm passionate about these. I am dedicated to this city, and I love this city so much. And I hope that I can secure your vote for Houston City Council on the 5th of November. Find out more about my campaign, marcelforhouston.com, M-A-R-C-E-L-F-O-R-houston.com. Social media is all, just Marcel McClinton, M-A-R-C-E-L-M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-N, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And I do want to say, though, just a side piece, you know, overpolicing our streets is not going to always make us safer. We need more officers in our city to keep us safe. But there's also comes a point in time, in some communities, we need to focus on community, community relational policing in our streets, which I think Chief Ossoito truly understands, and we're pushing that with him and Chief Finer. And that's where I think we should angle this. But I hope that our city can continue to lead the nation on these issues and solve them. We need a new generation of leaders. We can't rely on the same cycle of folks to fix our problems that they've, one, created and/or two, refused to fix. So learn more about me at marcelforhouston.com.
Thank you very much. Now, Michael Kubosh, I'm going to actually ask you the same question. Why are you the best candidate, and how can people learn more about your campaign? Thank you for covering for me earlier.
Well, if I have a voice, a vote, and a seat at the table that you gave me, then you have a voice, a vote, and a seat at the table. I've been telling you that we're in a public safety crisis. Houston, Harris County, has the highest intoxicated vehicular manslaughter deaths in the nation. We've got to do something about it. We've got to get people off the road late at night that are drinking and driving, hitting people, hitting police cars, and killing others. It's got to come to an end. We've got to stop it. Our former, our former district clerk, his father was killed by a drunk driver. Our former Lieutenant Governor, Dewhurst, his father was killed by a drunk driver. How serious this is, and it brings it all home to us. We've got to do better. I'm Michael Kubosh. You can find me on the website easily. It's kuboshforcouncil. Or you can email me, michaelkubosh@gmail.com.
Thank you very much. Janae, would you please tell us, why are you the best candidate for at-large position three, and how can people find out more about your campaign?
I'm the best candidate for at-large position three because not only am I, I have a life of service, but I've committed my professional existence to this work. I will forever serve our communities. And I believe that I have the experience, the unique confluence of experience and understanding of how our government works interconnectedly, to advance the desires of our city and to make sure that we are a better, more welcoming, more progressive, and more equitable city. And so you can find out about me. And before I go there, I do want to express the same sentiment as the gentleman next to me. My heart and my support goes out to the officer's family who intervened in the middle of crisis. And that's what our first responders do. They step in in the most dangerous situations, and I think we all want everyone to be able to go home alive and then safe. And so to address that, secondarily, the Texas Criminal Justice Coalition also provided a heat map that spoke to the overpolicing issue. It's not the amount of police, it's how we police these communities that matter. And so I want to, going back to my position, I want to improve the quality of life for all Houstonians through empowered communities, sustainable solutions to issues like human trafficking, both sex and labor, increasing the minimum wage for all municipal employees to a livable wage, and making, creating better access by unbundling contracts so that all of our small businesses have the opportunity to thrive and speak to our bottom line. You can find my information at JC43, that's J-C-F-O-R, the number three, dot com. My information for our social media is there as well, but you can find me at JC43HTX at Twitter, IG, and Facebook.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight, and not only for, not only for coming out to Houston Media Source TV and answering our questions, but for those well-thought-out questions, I thought, those well-thought-out responses. You had some really good answers, and it shows that you put a lot of thought. And so I salute you all because I think that whomever is decided upon at the election, I think the candidates will make a good choice, because now we're better informed about what you, who you are and what you stand for. So thank you again. Every year, the League of Women Voters puts out the Houston Area Voters Guide, and we're looking at not only all the city council positions, but also the Houston mayor, the Houston comptroller, the city comptroller, and also HISD's board and Houston Community College's board. Those are all going to be included in the Voters' Guide, also special election for District 148 for the Texas House. So that is going to come out in about mid-October. We've submitted questions to the candidates, very similar to the ones you heard tonight. They'll provide their written response, and you can find that online at lvwhouston.org and also the League's 411 app. It will be available in Spanish, English, Vietnamese, and Chinese. Also, if you go to our website, you can find our handy-dandy Voters' Guide. It's now available to answer questions you may have about the new methods of voting available here in the Houston area, and other questions you may have regarding your vote. So lvwhouston.org. You can also find us on our Facebook page, more information. And in fact, this show will be rebroadcast on YouTube here in a couple of days on the Houston Media Source TV site, and we'll post it on the League of Women Voters Facebook page as well, so you can catch up. If you want to hear what your candidates' response one more time, if you want to find out more information about them, we'll have that up in a few days. Also, on the 15th is the deadline to apply for our Rising Stars program. That's our League of Women Voters training program, leadership training program. The deadline is the 15th. More information is on our website. Thank you very much for tuning in for the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. I'm Gene Price. Thank you for watching Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV.